Good evening. Welcome to the Tuesday, April 26, 2022, meeting of the Long Meadow School Committee. Just a reminder that all votes while participating remotely must be made by roll call vote. One quick, timely announcement before we get started. If anybody is watching this live and has not yet voted, you have until eight o'clock to vote in the preliminary election for school committee. So I encourage you to do that. And if you have already voted, thank you very much. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We will start with our Student Advisory Council to the school committee.
Hello, everyone. I'll start off. So as you know, this is one of our monthly, bi-monthly meetings that we come, we come talking about anything that's happening at LHS in the areas of athletics, clubs, class activities, and school activities in general. Since Maddie's in here, I will start. So I'll start with athletics. Last we spoke was just towards the end of the winter season. Pretty good overall. We had boys varsity basketball with a winning record, girls varsity basketball with a losing record, sadly, boys varsity hockey won Western Mass, however, they were taken out by the number one seed because soon as they got to the state finals, of course, Long Meadow gets the first seed because obviously we're the best, we have to go against the best. And that's how it happened. Girls varsity hockey tied their record. Boys swimming won Western Mass, congratulations to them. Girls swimming had a winning record as well. And then boys wrestling, or varsity wrestling, had a winning record. And then moving on, transitioning into our spring season, tryouts went well. Everyone who got onto a varsity team or JV team, congratulations. Currently, as it sits right now, baseball has a losing record there. They're bringing it back. I know they had a Minichog game yesterday, so I'm still waiting on that report, but I didn't see any frowns today in class, so we should be good. Varsity boys lacrosse has a winning record, so does varsity girls lacrosse. Boys tennis is currently undefeated, so I know, and I think they have a game today or this week, so I will check in with them. And then varsity girls tennis also has a winning record. Boys track, yours truly, we are undefeated. We had a meet against North Hampton yesterday. We won 103, 132 to 43. So I'll take that as it is. And then girls track sadly has a losing record, but you know, it's fine. So that's what's going on in athletics right now. Club activities, clubs are meeting, some clubs are showing up, a lot of clubs are meeting, which is the best part. People are getting, becoming more active, they're seeing the opportunities that they have. I know one club, Little Readers Club, which is one of my friends, Matt Richards, they provide, they go to area libraries and they read to young children. It helps them with their National Honor Society hours, but also gets them involved in the community and community service, which is obviously very important. That club is actually, I think it's like a couple of months old, and it swelled in numbers because so many people wanted to help out, which is really, really cool. My club, the Model Congress Club, will be holding their conference. We're holding a conference here at LHS, which has LHS members, and we reached out to area schools as well for a Model Congress emergency session on military aid to Ukraine was our topic, and that will be held on the 23rd of May. And then moving into school activities, very busy spring, like I've mentioned before. We have, we had my delayed sophomore, my delayed sophomore semis since I'm a junior, we didn't have it last year. We had that a couple of weeks ago on April 8th. Then we have soph, the actual sophomore semi that are for the class of 2024. That is this week or next week?
May 13th.
May 13th. She knows. Okay. So that's on May 13th. We have High Meadows for our seniors, as well as their picnic and their graduation and all that good stuff. We also going, coming into election season, just like you guys. So we had a election for the Regional School Advisory Council, ARSEC, is their acronym, I believe. The elected representative is Matthew Richards, the president of Little Readers. And then we're going to be moving into our class elections, and then currently National Honor Society is in their elections. If anyone's watching, please vote Dagan Connolly for NHS president. If any students are watching, please. So that's school, that's clubs, that's athletics. And then classes, it's just the semis. The freshmen are just moving along as per usual, doing very, very well for themselves. Senior class is just, they're in the home stretch. They have, I believe, 21 days of school left. They're just, everyone's got their college stuff in or wherever their post-grad plans are. They're just trying to enjoy their time before graduation. And do I have anything else? Anything else, Mr. Dunkerly, that I'm missing?
Um, why don't we ask Maddie?
Oh, Maddie.
Yeah, I'm here. Hi, everyone. As a representative of the senior class, I'm going to be talking about a little bit more of our activities. So we did have our senior class play, which went very, very well. We actually sold out all tickets on Friday night, and we had about 900 attendees total, which is really great. And then some of the activities, which Dagan mentioned earlier, is High Meadows on Thursday. We have prom, which is on June 7th, graduation on the 9th. We have our senior social at the end of May, and then the senior picnic, which is on the last day of school, which is run by sport and event management, which is great involvement there. And then all activities, our back to normal is really exciting for us. We finally get to have a little normalcy. And then our class gift is a work in progress, but we are thinking of honoring Jake Posay, and we're thinking about the new speaker system for the track because he played football on that field. And then also in terms of finances, we roughly had an inflow of $14,000 and $14,050, and then an outflow of $3,591.67 with a profit of $10,458.33. And then the inflow was mostly from raffle tickets, sponsors, and concessions from the play. Outflow, programs, concessions purchased, props, set costumes, playwrights, lawn signs, mainly from the fly. So, thank you. That's all I have for you guys today.
Thanks, Maddie. So I think that concludes all of the reports from the school committee through advisory council. School committee members, if you have any questions for the students or myself, we'd be happy to answer those.
Committee, any questions? Gianna.
I just want to say thank you to you both and to the other students and to Maddie and your senior friends. Good luck with everything.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Any other comments or questions? Marty.
Maddie, I want to congratulate the Student Anti-Racism Committee for sponsoring the Ron Jones event, both for students and for parents. We had about 75 or 80 community members who showed up for that. Is there anything else you want to mention about that? Maddie, I thought it was, I was very pleased that we were able to amplify and amplify student voice on this important topic. I know it was important to your, to your student committee, and we were happy to see it go off without a hitch.
Yes, I appreciate you mentioning that. Yeah, as a part of the Anti-Racism Committee, we're actually having a meeting right now. I just stepped out of it to report to you guys, but we were very thrilled with the outcome and how many students expressed that they learned so much from the speaker Ron Jones. We're really excited to have him come to the school and be able to educate everyone in a very upbeat manner. And I feel like a lot of people took a lot out of it and were able to get educated and reach out to him for further information, which was really great. We did have a daytime event for students and a nighttime event for community members, which both went really well. We're actually reflecting on it in this meeting, and we're definitely hoping to continue our communication with Ron Jones. And thank you, guys, for supporting us. I really appreciate it.
Great job with that.
Any other comments or questions? All right. As always, thank you. Maddie, thanks for joining us. Mr. Dunkerly, thank you for joining us. Dagan, you're always with us. Thanks for being here.
My pleasure.
All right. Have a great night. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is correspondence. I'll turn it over to Nicole.
The following correspondence was recorded. An email from Ms. Julie Morgan dated March 28, 2022, regarding her candidacy for school committee. An email from Ms. Ariel Laughtersmith dated March 31, 2022, regarding the procedures when positive COVID cases are identified. A memo from Mr. Donald Jarvis, Director of CTEC, dated April 1, 2022, regarding the Walter E. Quigley Jr. Student of the Month awards for March 2022. The Long Meadow students honored were Isabella Sanchez for Graphic and Visual Design I, Emily Gettens for Health Assisting I, and Logan Chobert Hopkins for Integrated Occupational Prep. We also received an email from Ms. Betsy Fernandez dated April 5, 2022, regarding safety procedures. Ms. Kristen Sealy dated April 13, 2022, regarding the middle school cellphone policy. An email from Ms. Corey Spalding dated April 15, 2022, regarding Policy DD of our policy manual. And an email from Ms. Anna Nolan, Superintendent of Schools in Natick, Massachusetts, dated April 15, 2022, in response to Ms. Spalding's email.
Thank you, Nicole. Next up, we have approval of minutes and a possible motion.
I move that the school committee approve the minutes for the March 29, 2022, school committee meeting as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, we will move to a vote. Susie.
Yes.
Nicole.
Yes.
Gianna.
Yes.
Mary.
Yes.
Bronwyn.
Yes.
Jamie.
Yes.
And I will abstain. All right. Now we move to visitor comments. As always with our visitor comments, you have three minutes, and we ask you to address the committee, not individuals, you're addressing the committee. And we always welcome any comments from visitors. Make sure you state your name and your address. Do we have any visitor comments? I do not see any visitors in person.
They're all voting.
On Zoom.
They're all voting.
Yeah, exactly. Yes. Yeah. All right. Then we will move on. School committee announcements and recognitions. Any announcements or recognitions? Mary.
The LHS PAC group met on April 5. The topics were student activities and teacher requests. Great meeting, engaged parents. And also, a shout out to our Williams students and staff who participated in night activities.
Susie.
Yes. Let's see, we didn't meet since then, but on April 8, we had Blueberry Scott Talent, and that was a great celebration to bring back to Blueberry Hills School, and it was here, held here at the high school. And Adele showed up, it was great. But no, the kid, it was so wonderful to see the kids so excited to share their talent. And it wasn't just talent onstage, it was also talent offstage. So the coordination by Katie Newton, who from the, who takes this on every time, was absolutely incredible, and the kids were great, and all the volunteers, and every, everything from, you know, behind the scenes work that kids were doing. It was just a real celebration of student talent. There were comedy acts, there were lots of comedy acts, actually, lots of singing and dancing, gymnastics, all sorts of stuff. But yeah, the jokes were definitely the highlight. I hope you've been using them as your warnings. Good material. Yeah, no, it was great.
Excellent. Other comments? Bronwyn, please.
Thanks, Kevin. Mr. Landers checked this out. I just wanted to congratulate Sean Baker, he's a senior, and he was recognized at a recent Boston Bruins game for the 2022 Boston Bruins MIAA Sportsmanship Award. There's only one hockey player for each league in the state, and it's whoever best exemplifies the highest standards of fair play and sportsmanship. And Sean received that award, I just wanted to congratulate him and thank him for representing Long Meadow High in such an amazing, wonderful way. And I heard it was a very exciting night, we had the Bruins, and very, very close, the pictures I saw. And not a lot of, you know, students received this award, and I just wanted to congratulate him. Thanks.
Thank you, Bronwyn. Yeah, that's definitely an amazing achievement. Gianna.
Bronwyn, thanks for mentioning that. I also wanted to just, I had printed out some stuff because like you and like everybody else, you know, at a time now, especially when we're seeing in sports, you know, at every level, you know, umpires and referees are leaving, you know, at a time where it's getting increasingly challenging to be able to celebrate and see all of the amazing sportsmanship. I just, you know, again, like Bronwyn, like you were saying, and everybody else is appreciating the magnitude of this award, and I believe it was something like 29 students out of 10,000 across the Commonwealth, you know, so only 29 out of 10,000, which to me is remarkable. And I actually printed out the, the stuff that the Bruins, that the sportsmanship award, and if it's okay, Kevin, I just really want to read it because I think it's super important. You know, so the students that received this award have an exemplary record of complying both in spirit and letter with all league and MIAA rules and regulations during the season, a demonstrated record of respectfully accepting the rulings of game officials, a record of conduct on and off the ice that brings honor to the self, to self, team, school, and community, a commitment to teamwork by providing all members with recognition of their talents, an opportunity to contribute them to the team, and a spirit of camaraderie, and a demonstrated respect for opponents before, during, and after the game. And then head coach Jim Joyce said this of Sean, senior captain 13, has strong leadership skills, and is respectful of teammates, coaches, opponents, and referees. Sean has played in all 23 games, led us to the Class A Western Mass Championship in a first-round win in the Division II MIAA tournament versus Algonquin. Sean loves the game of hockey and plans to make his decision in colleges based off of academics and club hockey opportunities. And then another just kind of quote about Sean, again, I think, you know, and thank you for allowing me to read these because I just think it's just important to hear from the people that know him. So we heard from the press release, you know, and beyond that, you know, this, this is coming from, from the coach and Sean's dad, again, Sean's parents. I would say that as a captain, Sean sought to make every kid feel included as part of the team, from seniors down to freshmen, whether they were on varsity or JV. He also made sure that the younger kids did not feel pressured to grow up too quickly. This spring season, he is captain of the tennis team and is trying to instill that same sense among all team members. Next year, he's helping to play club hockey for the College of Holy Cross, which is an amazing school. So again, thank you, Bronwyn, for mentioning this, but also just wanted to, to share the comments about Sean and just reiterate the importance of, you know, just making all of the kids feel welcome, making everybody feel valued, and also respecting the officials in the other teams, and that's huge right now. So thank you, Sean, for being awesome.
Absolutely. Thank you, Gianna. Other comments? All right. We will move to business with guests. And it's really my pleasure to introduce our first guest, who is here with us. And Rebecca, I hope you'll grab a seat next to Dagan. So Rebecca Towson is our town moderator, and for folks who don't know Rebecca, in addition to being our town moderator, she's also a scholar of town meeting. And so we're very, very fortunate in town to have Rebecca in this role, leading us through town meeting. And we invited her here today to just help us, help educate or remind us about the importance of town meeting, how things work, and how important town meeting is for the schools. And so I think for just a little introduction, I think Marty wanted to take it first before we turn it over to Rebecca. So thank you for your patience.
Yeah, thank you, Rebecca, for joining us. And this is timely, of course, with town meeting on the horizon, and annually, there are events that appear on the Town Meeting warrant that are important to us, and we've been fortunate to receive such great support from the community at town meetings. As in past years, anticipate that there'll be some items relating to our capital needs, anticipate that there'll be, obviously, our, the school committee's voted budget incorporated into the select board's budget would be reflected in the Town Meeting warrant. And also additionally, we're anticipating that we need to renew a lease on staff computers, and so we're anticipating that that will come up at the, at the town meeting as well. So we're, we're excited to have Rebecca here, and it comes at a great time with, with town meeting scheduled for May 10th. So, welcome.
Thank you both very much, and thank you to the rest of you for welcoming me. Appreciate meeting you, and I think you are the student who Mr. Dunkerly had emailed?
Yes.
Okay, so we have our student who's going to be starting us off with the Pledge of Allegiance, sitting right next to me. So, so yes, May 10th, town meeting. The, the slideshow that I've got there has a QR code, which is brand new. We've never used QR codes for town meeting before. Why not? I credit Mike Barbieri, who's the assistant to the town manager, with coming up with this idea of being able to share the links to the warrant via this QR code. So if you head to that, you will get this, but in a much more readable format. You'll also get some videos about different articles, some explainers about town meeting, and more reports. It's chock full of information. So we're trying to make sure that folks understand what their local government is and what they can do with it. And so I'll share a little bit about the May 10th town meeting at the high school, Back to the Gym. Very happy about that. The roles of town meeting, it's not just one thing, it's many things. And discussions of the basics. So for many of you in the room, this is old hat, but for anybody listening at home, this may be some, some new information. Finally, talking about electronic voting and ways people can participate. Advance the slide, please. So town meeting is a learning place. It's a place where people can learn about issues more deeply. They learn about how their neighbors feel about issues, how the elected and appointed officials feel about issues. They bring their stories, they bring their pros, their cons. They, they learn more deeply about how the community feels about a given issue. But we're, we're doing some policymaking and budget determining. So whether or not there's new computers, whether the budget is approved or not, rests with town meeting. But I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the communal function. There's a really important notion of coming together in person to be with one another and recognize the good things that we're doing in our community. And the picture there is of the late James Russell receiving an award. And I'll never forget the feeling that I had when I took that picture because, you know, he just generated so much warmth from the community. And that's one thing that we do at town meeting at the very start, is we have an award ceremony for whether Citizen of the Year or the Cliff Zandell Award, but it does bring people together. And so various roles, but yes, it's a direct democracy. She leads to the next slide, please. And in a direct democracy, citizens are the local legislature. If you're registered to vote in Long Meadow, you're a legislator. And what that means is you, you can make proposals to town meeting. You can weigh the pros and cons. You can decide issues. You could amend if you wanted to, but ultimately, you vote. So the budget does not get approved unless citizens vote for it. Nothing gets approved unless the citizens vote for it, whether it's zoning bylaws or general bylaws, capital projects, what have you. So while the elected and the appointed folks, like you all, have prominent places, you all have, we haven't had the traditional town meeting in a while, but you may remember that there's a spot for the select board, a spot for the finance committee, and then a spot for the school committee, right up front. And I welcome you to take that wonderful place in the front. Looking forward to seeing you there. It's, it's important for, for citizens to be able to face their elected and appointed officials. And you'll be making recommendations to town meeting, as will the finance committee. Next slide, please. So in the warrant, which the word warrant is, comes from the word warning, like here's a warning, here's an advance warning of what's going to be discussed. And that warrant calls people to town meetings. So it's delivered to everyone's home, whether you receive the reminder regularly or not, you get the warrant. If for some reason you mowed over it or something, or it rained and you damaged it, go to longmeadow.org/townmeeting and you'll find it. The warrant gives a list of what's going to be discussed. I think the next slide, please. And within this, you'll see a lot of information. You'll see, say, for example, Article 1, to see if the town will vote to choose three trustees to administer the William Goldthwait Bequest, or take any other action relative thereto, a bunch of kind of hedging language. So that's the article. We vote on each item in turn, but we're not actually voting on the article, we're voting on a motion. So somebody will stand and say, I move that we choose three trustees, and they name them. And it's that motion that can differ very slightly from the article itself that we vote on. And so because there can be some slight difference, and because motions can be amended, we cannot do anything like absentee ballots because town meeting decides exactly what we're going to be voting on. The article gives the general overview, the motion gives the specific proposal, and then it may be amended. So that's what we're voting on, is the motion. Next slide, please. So you, as citizens, can participate by volunteering at town meeting, by signing, creating a petition, through collaborating with boards and committees on a proposal that's of interest to you, through speaking in favor, opposed, or asking a question. And there are three microphones that we've come to rely on to make things a little bit easier to keep track of things. One is red for those opposed to a motion, one is green for those in support or in favor, and one is yellow in case, like, slow down, I want to ask some questions. You can ask those questions, or you can make a motion. And then ultimately, we vote. And this is where things get interesting. This year, we're doing something different. Several years ago, when I became moderator, people would ask me, can we, can we vote by ballot, even at town meeting? And we have on some, some hot-button issues, some issues in which neighbor were fighting neighbor, and people didn't want to share their, their vote with their neighbor lest the, the community bond get rendered. And so we did some votes by ballot, but that takes an awful long time. And if we tried to do that in an annual town meeting warrant, or warrant, annual town meeting, rather, it takes up an awful long time. And so I've spoken with the Massachusetts Moderators Association, an organization this year I'm pleased to say I'm president of. And I learned that there are over 70 communities throughout Massachusetts that use clicker devices or electronic voting. And so I thought, well, let's, let's form a committee. I had the Rules Committee look into it for several years, and then they suggested a task force be devoted to, you know, get into it a little bit more deeply. This task force was created, I didn't know exactly how I felt about it, quite frankly, and I made no opinions on it whatsoever, much to their frustration. They just wanted me to say, just do this. And I had my hands off deliberately. I was not a part of this committee. I listened. And they recommended that we go with this particular system, the Meridia system, which is used in half of those towns that use electronic voting. It is not internet-based, it is an encrypted system, there's a radio frequency that it uses, and if you go beyond that radio frequency, you, there's, and you don't have the particular device, you can't vote with that. If you'd like to read the task force's report, you can go to longmeadow.org/electronicvoting. And I wanted to share with you, let's see, I don't think I have it on the next slide. Actually, could you go to the next slide, please? Yeah, there we go. This, this is what it'll look like. So when you go in to register to vote, not register to vote, when you go into the clerk staff, you'll be asked to give your name, your address, like you normally do. And I don't know if any of you voted today, but I voted today and got a little receipt. They'll give you a little receipt, your ticket out. They will also give you this baggie. Mine says 1307. This was helped fill by volunteers on April 20th. In this baggie, well, you actually, you'll get this baggie, you'll go to the gym door, somebody will say, do you have your receipt? Yes, take the receipt. Does your clicker number, 1307, match the bag? Yes, it does. And then you'll be allowed entry to the meeting. And then you'll be allowed entry to town meeting. There is an electronic voting instruction card, two-sided. The font's pretty good. I probably should still use my reading glasses, I'm not sure. So arriving, you'll be asked to put this lanyard on. It's bright green, so you will not lose it whatsoever. And I'm going to be handing this out to you all. What I'd like to tell you about is how this works. You'll see on the clicker, it says green, red, and yellow, and then two other white buttons. The green is 1A, the red is 2B, the 3 says 3C, then 4D and 5E. Really, the only two buttons we're using are 1 and 2. You vote 1 for yes, 2 for no. It's very simple. 3 says abs. It's abstain, not abs, no matter how many times you click it, there's not an instant abs button. I'm sorry. Bad jokes abound. Get used to that. And so when that comes up, you'll see on the screen, we'll have screens at town meeting, they'll say the total vote of whatever has come through. So if there's three yeses, that'll show that. If there's three noes, that'll show that. It'll be a tie. If you don't vote, you don't vote. It doesn't get put in. Now, voting has to occur when I say, "Voting is now open." You'll have 15 seconds to vote. And on the screen of the device, we'll see, it's not on now, obviously, but it'll say 1, and then a little okay, if you pressed button number 1. Or it'll say 2 with an okay up at the top left of the screen. Now let's say you wanted to vote yes, but you accidentally voted no. If it's within that 15 seconds, you can change your mind. You can go back and forth as many times as you want, but 15 seconds is up. Whatever you entered last, when I say voting is now closed, that's the vote that gets recorded. If you try to vote before I say voting is open, you'll get a letter A if you press 1, and a letter B if you press 2. That's not a vote. You have to see a 1 or a 2. So I am more than thrilled to take questions from you on this. I think that's the last slide, but yeah, questions. I'm really excited about this new system. It's very simple. We will be doing some test runs with some softball votes that don't count at the start, just to get everybody in the swing of things. And we will be doing a, I believe on May 3rd, a test run, if anybody wants to see it, at the senior center, where you get to play with them. We had a test system before they were purchased through the use of ARPA funds, and it was comprised of boards and committee members. They loved the system. Thank you. They absolutely loved the system. And, you know, that strength of support from our dedicated town volunteers was really impressive to me. So we went with that particular system. So happy to take your questions.
Thank you, Rebecca. This is great, and it's going to be an amazing advance for town meeting. So thank you and the task force for making that happen. So committee, the floor is open to you for questions or comments for Rebecca. Jill?
I was just going to say, thank you.
Oh, sure.
I mean, you're just awesome. You do this, like, so graciously and super smart. But I do, I remember the whole electronic... So it's a couple of years in the making, so thanks for sticking with it, because I agree for all of us. So thank you.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Go ahead, you go.
Thank you for, I just wanted to say thank you for coming out and walking everybody through this. We send the minutes and the links to the meetings get sent by our principals every week out to families. So this will be a good thing for us to let families know that they can get a little preview of what to expect when they check out the meeting minutes or the meeting videos from this, tonight.
Super.
Thank you. This is going to be great.
Sure.
Looking forward to it.
And so Rebecca, I wonder, and maybe Marty, too, one of the things that will come up is our middle school project. And I wonder if either or both of you want to just walk us through how the middle school project will come to town meeting, I think on more than one occasion, just so that folks know that in addition to regular items that happen annually, there are some of these special things that come to town meeting that are really important for folks to pay attention to, because I think everybody who might be listening in on this is very invested in the middle school project. So I don't know, Marty, Rebecca, who wants to take it first?
Well, if you can outline the overall process for school building, and I can take it from the town meeting.
Thank you, that, yeah.
Yep.
That would be great. So Kevin's correct, there's really a couple of stages that would require the approval of the community. And the first stage is likely the approval of funds to conduct a feasibility study, assuming that it's a, that it is something that the town would need to borrow for. That feasibility study would need to be approved by the residents. Now, there are some communities that manage a feasibility study and finance it in other ways, but it's likely that it would go to town meeting. And then the other thing that would need approval would be funds for the ultimate design and construction of whatever needs to be constructed out of the middle school project. So the feasibility study, and then ultimately, any renovation, construction costs, design costs would also have to be approved. So, and I would anticipate that, you know, the second of those, we're probably five years out. So we're, or, yeah, probably four or five years away from that coming before the residents at town meeting. But those are the two points where we would need to engage the community.
And then obviously, once it's, you know, on the warrant for town meeting, whether it's at a special town meeting, typically those take place in the fall. They can take place at other times throughout the year. There was one year we had five town meetings, four specials and one annual. That was unusual. But typically, there's two a year. And so this could come at a fall town meeting, perhaps, or an annual. I don't know what the timeframe you all have is, or would be. But certainly, you know, we would want to make sure that citizens have a chance to get to know the pros and the cons of any given project like this one. And if anybody had any questions about the process itself, I more than welcome people coming to contact me on that. I answer phone calls confidentially, and emails, of course, are public records, but happy to do that. And certainly, if it were part of, if it were a standalone meeting, the whole meeting would be devoted to that. If it were part of a special town meeting, only part of the meeting would be devoted to that particular issue.
And Rebecca, one of the fun things when you go to town meeting is watching you try to figure out if it's a majority, or a two-thirds vote, or whatever. For dead exclusions, like we're talking about, is that a majority vote?
Oh, gosh, quiz time. I want to say it's a two-thirds.
Two-thirds, okay.
I'm going to err on the side of war.
All right. Well, again, we have time for it. But I think that's important for people to remember as well, when you go to town meeting, it's not always a majority vote.
Yeah.
And it's very important to recognize that when it's an issue that you're passionate about, to know, how many of your friends do you need to bring in? And get in the room so that you can make sure that everybody's voice is heard in those town meetings.
In the case of borrowing, it's two-thirds. And so, yes, and there certainly, there are some motions that come before us that are four fifths or nine tenths.
It keeps it entertaining for the audience, that's for sure.
So much math.
Yeah, and you're not running the show, Dagan, so.
Ask a question?
Yeah, please.
When the electronic votes are taken, is it a running tally that's shown up on the screen, or do you wait till all the votes are in and then reveal the final vote?
We will be waiting until the votes are in. Less visual stimuli, everybody votes, you have 15 seconds, ta-da. We're trying to make it so that there's a clock, a timer ticking, so people know they have 15... 15 seconds goes by pretty fast. And we want people to be comfortable with it, but I should note that all votes are private. So we're, we don't, even though we are noting that you have number 1307, we're doing that only because if you decide that you want to walk home with this, we know which house-to-mail request to bring it back. We don't have any record of who votes how. So that's just kind of wiped clean right away, onto the next vote.
Sue, go ahead.
Sorry. Is there an opportunity for accommodations for somebody who is maybe visually impaired or didn't have great dexterity or something like that? Is there?
So, I don't know if you got to see these. Let me just pass it along to you.
Thanks.
But, you know, you can try pressing the buttons. If there, if somebody does have an issue where they, you know, the first button they press is yes, the second button is no. We haven't heard of many towns having issues with folks having trouble with these systems. But certainly, if anybody does have any issue, we would want to make sure that their votes are counted, and they should come to see us right away during those practice votes so that we can make that. But if somebody comes in the middle of the meeting and they have a problem, you don't have to just let us know there's a problem in the beginning. And certainly, if anyone had any problem whatsoever, they didn't see the 1 recorded and an okay, come and let us know. So, and the, you'll see that the vote totals change depending on the motion, because not everybody votes on every issue. And people, the tally of who's there fluctuates. Sometimes we have more at a given point in the meeting, and sometimes we have less. So I want to give you the heads up that there will be a fluctuation in the total number for natural reasons, so.
Any other comments or questions? Rebecca, thank you so much for coming.
Sure.
We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
For all of your work for the town. Thank you.
Take care, everyone.
Nice to see you.
See you in two weeks. All right. Next up, we have our elementary math presentation. So Marty, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you so much. So I'd like to introduce to the committee and to the community two of our guests this evening, Chelsea Berry and Nancy Moriarty. Chelsea serves as a math specialist at Blueberry Hill School, also our math coordinator for our elementary schools. And Nancy is our math specialist at Wolf Swamp Elementary School. And they have done an incredible job of guiding us through a process to recommend a new elementary math series. And I want to thank them for that, but I think you'll see from the thoroughness of their presentation that it was an incredibly thorough process. Chelsea and Nancy had an opportunity to meet with the curriculum subcommittee to offer an initial explanation of where we are. And so thanks to the curriculum subcommittee for that. But per the, your school committee policy, since this is a major curriculum decision, it does require the approval of the school committee. No decision is possible tonight, given that your policy requires essentially a public review period. So tonight, the recommendation would be made, it would be a signal to the community that there'll be a vote at your upcoming meeting. So again, thanks to Chelsea and Nancy for joining us. And I should turn it over to Sue, who's been working most closely with them in this process. So thank you, Sue, as well.
Yep, they've been awesome. You had all the great points. Thank you. I just want to thank you both so much, Chelsea and Nancy Moriarty over at Wolf Swamp. Chelsea's pilot thinking, "I came to a great meeting," because she has a really keen interest in town politics and local government, and did a stint as a committee member, school committee member, at a district not too far away. So she's really invested in so many angles, and she's finishing up, or finished off her leadership internship hours, literally hundreds of hours, where she's met lots of competencies. And Nancy has played a huge role in making math really important at Wolf Swamp Schools. She sees students and staff. She's, you know, a closet coach, because she's really great at helping the teachers out of pinches. And so thanks to them, they've been amazing, really. And we had a huge turnout for this pilot, and we had a high-quality teacher share facilitated by these ladies. And what, I think 13 or so educators took place in either the high-quality teacher share or the committee work. And then 38-plus teachers actually did the pilot, piloted two texts. I don't want to take too much of your presentation away from you, so I'll turn it back over. But thank you to everybody. It was a challenging year for everybody for so many reasons, and teachers really came out of the woodwork at elementary to do a great job piloting this, and they were phenomenal and so professional. So I thank them so much.
Yeah, we wanted to start, I think, by also thanking all of the teachers that worked alongside us. It was a big lift for already have a year, but it just kind of speaks to our commitment to constantly growing and meeting the needs of our students. I think I wanted to kind of piggyback on the sentiments from Ms. Allentuck, where she was kind of congratulating Sean for creating this environment where all are welcomed and valued. And I think you'll see that theme even as we go into the math. So our...
Did you want to show the presentation?
Yeah, I'll jump right in.
The video or the presentation?
The presentation, please.
Presentation, good.
This process was actually supposed to start right when everything was supposed to start in March of 2020. And so we had a little bit of a delay, and with that delay, it became even more imperative to get this work done, to do it well, but to get this work done so that our students can have the best possible program in the future. So instead of March of 2020, we started with a small group in the summer of 2021. We had seven educators, and even though it was a small group, we still covered three of our elementary schools. And we met to start our first steps in the math curriculum review process. We really used that time to kind of get our initial vision down and discuss really what was it that we wanted to be providing our students. And also survey the landscape, because the last time we had reviewed was a long time ago, and there was a lot of new programs out there. There was a lot of programs that were touting to be maybe free source or open source. And so a lot had changed with that, and we used that time during our summer to really dig in and get some of that big organizational work and alignment done. And then we kickstarted in our, for the school year, and we had educators actually volunteer to pilot the programs, but they also, we wanted to make sure that there was a way for everyone to participate in some way, whether it was after school, during a high-quality teacher share, for those who felt like maybe they couldn't really leave the classroom for extra committee meetings. But then also the committee meetings and the committee work that did need to be done during the school day, we tried to limit down to just four committee meetings during the school year, because finding substitutes and finding coverage was extremely hard. And so shout out to our administrators who worked creatively to make sure that we could get to those meetings. And then we were able to whittle down our process, and we ended up piloting two programs. And so we've actually come together as a committee, and we have a recommendation for you, and our hope is to begin the year one of implementation this fall. Now, I'm going to go quickly over this, because I kind of already said all of that. But we really, what was different about this process this time around, and I led the last process before, too, but the last process, we really focused on making sure that our Common Core standards or in our Massachusetts framework standards were all covered. There was this big shift to make sure that we were actually teaching the right things and checking off the list of what was in it. We combed through piles of curriculum, and we literally checked off to make sure that all of those standards were met the last time we did it. This time around, we have EdReports, which has come out, and that's an independent reviewing company. And so they're luckily, they're doing a lot of that heavy work of looking for alignment and those standards there. And that allowed us to really spend a lot of time, yes, making sure we're aligned and that's there in place, but to really look at the teaching practices, really honing in on the experience we want to provide and that kind of refinement. So we can go to the next slide. A lot of what we ended up talking about really comes back to our Long Meadow vision of the graduate. You can keep going, there's a lot of extra just talking point slides. There we go. And so just as a reminder, our vision of the graduate includes... And so just as a reminder, our vision of the graduate includes growing our students' accountability, their independence, their problem solving skills, critical thinking skills, collaboration and communication. And strangely enough, all of that also overlaps with our standards for mathematical practice that are, that were defined by NCTM, but also they're in our Massachusetts frameworks for mathematics. And so making sense of problems, persevering, reasoning, strategically using tools, being precise in tons of reasoning is just woven in throughout. All of that really echoes a lot of our vision of the graduate skills as well. And then it also comes up again in our NCTM's Effective Mathematics Teaching Practices, making sure that we have goals that really focus our learning, tasks that promote reasoning and problem solving, mathematical discourse and communication and collaboration. Also coming up with procedural and developing procedural fluency and having our students involved in productive struggle. Those things seem to echo the same goals as well. And additionally, there are also additional process standards for mathematics, the things that we want our students to really get involved in doing. We want them to be problem solving. We want them to be showing their work through representations and reasoning and proof and making connections across representations because that really brings out their higher level thinking and also communicating all of this. And that again, echoes back to our vision of the graduate. We want to develop these students, or our students to be able to communicate and problem solve and work together. And so in the summer, this is kind of our big brainstorming list. In the summer, this is the list we came up with, the seven of us. And I won't read them all out loud because I know you've seen them too. But really, everything we came up with, with that list echoes all of those things as well. And so I just really want to emphasize that our vision is so in line with our vision of the graduate, our district improvement goals, it's all just came together so perfectly. And so it was our goal, we set out to select a program that encourages positive math identities and develops a math community, emphasizes challenging and complex problem solving for all learners, supports students in developing their perseverance, their precision and reflective thinking, promotes sense-making, mathematical reasoning and procedural fluency. Remember, we, a lot of times people are saying, what's up with this new math, right? We don't necessarily need to be making computers or calculators. We do need to be helping develop students to be novel problem solvers and to look at things differently. And we do, at the same time, we do really want them to be good at their math facts. That is still important. And so that's reflected in this too. So we want them to be able to develop their learning across the progression and make connections with math in the real world. We wanted a program that integrates the tools, tools and technology, but not necessarily, it wasn't on our top list that it needed to be technology based, but that it really integrated it well and thoughtfully and productively. And prioritizes fluency development, which we talked about that. We wanted a program that supports and maximizes student learning potential in mathematics. And that embeds assessment and actually supports our standards-based assessments. So we had 12 programs that were in our base review. And with that strong vision and all of those real specific things we were looking for, we went through and kind of put it through the first sieve. And you might have to keep clicking.
There we go.
Okay. And so that brought us down to three, which were illustrative math investigations and bridges in mathematics. And investigations for a lot of people might pop up and they had the third edition. It was Investigations Round Three, which has a history with our district. And that was something we really wanted to dig into. But upon more in-depth review of materials, working with Ed Reports and the Massachusetts DCE CURI rubrics that we were able to use, we ended up eliminating investigations from our three. The pilot was not perfect. It was very in-depth and very thorough, but it was not perfect. Because it was a pilot and actually from recommendations from DCE, we were only supposed to pilot one or two units of each program, which means it still was kind of limited exposure. And depending on what that pilot topic might have been, gave you a different experience. There was limited support because one of our schools was, ended up being without a math specialist. Or we, our job really is at the core intervention and servicing our students in the intervention room. And so to be able to fully support our teachers at our schools was difficult. But we did try. And we had limited time. Both of the programs that we were looking at required above 60 minutes, which is what we're typically looking at. And some schedules, even the 60 minutes gets a little chopped up depending. So that was also a challenge to fit in a program that really demanded more time. And then we also figuring out that scope and sequence of putting the units in from one program with the other with our original program and making sure that there were no missed key pieces of information was challenging. But it also meant that potentially you were using a unit that's supposed to be at the end of the year, maybe more towards the beginning of the year. And so some background and scaffolding needs, needed to be addressed. And also this particular year, we're still dealing with a lot of student absences, even teacher absences. We, the scope and sequence made it twice. It was rough. Student readiness, because last year was different for everybody. And so even talking about math skills, but also social emotional skills, the two programs we piloted required a lot of communication and a lot of gameplay. And that was really hard at the beginning of the year and still a little bit now for our students to engage in that much gameplay when they hadn't had as much exposure and chances of working on losing and winning and turn-taking. So we did have 38 educators participate in this process. And maybe we think that there's a few extras who may have supported in the classroom or special educators who might not have gotten their own kit. But we've kind of heard from different people who we didn't think were involved. So that was kind of cool. And so we're here, making, we had to come to consensus as a group with all the feedback from our piloting educators and the high quality teacher share and some background information there. We really worked for not coming, not making a decision or a recommendation based off of a vote, but off of consensus. There were definitely some concerns that we'd like to make sure we bring up to you because we want to be very realistic and also ask for your support in moving forward with those too. So we had illustrative math and bridges in mathematics and it was a really good conversation. Both of them had some...
There we go. No one else.
What ended up happening is that for most of those piloting, they ended up experiencing that students were able to be engaged and had entry points more so. It was more so evident in bridges in mathematics. There was definitely some different experiences that may have happened, and particularly in our upper grades too, where teacher usability or even maybe even concerns with how is this lesson supposed to go? There's a lot going on here. Is it that my students don't have the background information? Or is it because of how this lesson is presented? And so those concerns were heard. And we also have some other concerns that we'll bring forward in our next steps. But I do want to highlight for you the good stuff.
Am I ready to advance?
Yeah, I think you're ready.
I already ruined the suspense, so. There we go.
So Bridges in Mathematics is from the Math Learning Center, which is a research-based center that came from the National Science Foundation in the 60s? I've already forgotten.
At least 30 years.
Yeah, a long time. I had the number, but now it's gone. And so they've been researching mathematics for a long time. And all of this is, all of their curriculum work and program is based off of that research. Ed Reports, right now you can see that Ed Reports gave it its highest rating of meets expectations for alignment to the curriculum necessary for each of the grades and also for usability, it meets expectations as well. And then you can give us a click there.
One more?
Some, without reading all of that, I think some key takeaways is there's complex and novel problems. They're different, they're engaging. There's direct instruction, but also structured investigation. So, and not just, there's also a little bit of open exploration, but the investigations have a point and they're scaffolded so that they get to where you need to go. And so, but it's all balanced out. It's also very heavy in language development and supporting language as well as visual supports as well. So some key components that you will notice in the program is that there are problems and investigations for every lesson. Those are whole group activities. Students are getting together, they're working through things. There's a problem that's posed by the teacher. They can work independently or work with pairs, turning and talking, and then come together and share and compare their strategies and solutions as a whole class. And one of the things I did share with the curriculum subcommittee is, I think sometimes people get worried when we say like, we're just going to share everybody's solutions. But part of some of the great PD that's built into this program is really understanding that yes, we are honoring everybody's solutions and where everyone's at, but we're really explicitly trying to move them towards the more efficient strategy. And so everyone can bring their little piece, but we want to move you forward and move you along. And that's really one of the strengths of this, the biggest strengths of this program. We have workplaces and workplaces really are kind of like center activities. There's games, there's activities that aren't really games. There's cards built in that come with the program. And so instead, it's really kind of nice from a teacher's perspective that there are games that specifically hone in on the specific skill you're trying to work on. And you're not trying to make up new games or search the internet for five hours trying to find that exact specific skill. It's curated so that everything is targeted. And then another huge component is that there is actually, and it's actually separate, but working together. The number corner time is really built off of the classroom calendar. But it's, as you can see there, it's like a calendar with so much more. A lot of this, and you'll see it also in action, there's a little bit of a video later, would be daily or Nancy, every so often.
Yeah, a few times we could do it. There's a few components of the number corner. And one of them is this calendar piece that you might do a couple of times a week, but there's all kinds of things in the calendar. But then there's also another thing that does collections, like one class was collecting liters of water, but every day they would pour into it like a quarter of a cup. And then, you know, so you're counting by one fourths also. And you're seeing, you know, oh, by the time I do four of those, I've got one whole liter. And, you know, and so it's kind of a buildup. So that's done every couple of days too, the calendars every couple of days. And there's some other kinds of computational fluency activities or games that you can do on different days. But this is a separate, like 15 or so minute, 15 to 20 minute activity that reinforces different skills and different kinds of thinking and patterns. Like if you studied this calendar for long, you'd see there's different calendar, different patterns based on colors, different, based on the types of shapes, like 2D shapes and 3D shapes. And there's patterns even going diagonally. And there's just a lot that the kids get really excited about. This is a really exciting component. And every person that I talked to that was piloting this, that was using this was like, wow, this was fun. And the kids were like, when is that time? When am I doing that? You know, so that was exciting.
And that's one of those areas where all students can have something to bring to the conversation. Like I just noticed that it's going to be, the pattern is white, blue, white, blue at the simplest level. Or I can start to notice that there were cylinders going diagonally. Or I can start to predict what's going to come next. But yes, so we've described a little bit of it. And then I think it really helps to see this video and kind of kids and teachers interacting with some of those components.
And then folks at home, if you're having any difficulty hearing, if you could send us a signal somehow. But I think this should work.
Bridges in Mathematics is a comprehensive math curriculum for students in pre-kindergarten through fifth grade. Bridges is recognized for its focus, coherence and rigor by the independent evaluating organization, Ed Reports. In a Bridges classroom, students learn that math makes sense. Classrooms are filled with the voices of children talking about math. Students engage in hands-on learning using tools like dominoes, dice, spinners and cubes to solve problems. They complete activities and play games collaboratively to help them make sense of important mathematical ideas. That's all by design with the teacher leading the students to engage with the mathematics.
Okay.
We're just getting pictures.
Gotcha, okay.
If you go to the... Oh, when you share, when you share, you have to put the sound on. There you go.
Share sound, there we go.
Sense. Classrooms are filled with the voices of children talking about math. Students engage in hands-on learning using tools like dominoes, dice, spinners and cubes to solve problems. They complete activities and play games collaboratively to help them make sense of important mathematical ideas. That's all by design with the teacher leading the students to engage with the mathematics and with one another. The discussions where you'll hear phrases like, why do you think that happens? Do you notice any patterns? Or tell me about your thinking. Enable students to explore concepts, learn from one another and develop the habit of explaining their thinking. Bridges helps to create an environment where students feel safe to share their ideas, discuss math freely and interact with one another. The hands-on materials provided with the curriculum, such as number racks and number pieces, support an approach to math that may look different from the way you were taught. Students are encouraged to wrestle with ideas and make sense of math, creating visual models, which are proven to help students understand mathematical concepts at a deeper level. Let's look at an example from the Bridges curriculum. How would you solve this problem? Thirty-four plus seventeen. Many of us learn to solve this problem by stacking the numbers on top of one another, adding and carrying a one. But did you understand why you were doing that? Could you explain why the one is carried and what it means mathematically? At the Math Learning Center, we believe teaching procedures before serious time is spent exploring the underlying principles of mathematics leaves many children behind. By experimenting with how numbers work, students develop multiple strategies to approach new problems. Take a look at some of the strategies generated by students in a grade three Bridges classroom. What do you notice? Students in Bridges classrooms learn to approach problems flexibly using a variety of strategies and visual models. They explore mathematics in ways that build understanding instead of memorizing and mimicking procedures. The result? Students with a deep understanding of mathematics who are confident and effective math thinkers. When asked to describe how teaching... When asked to describe how teaching Bridges impacts their students, here's what a few teachers had to say.
My second year of teaching, I started using Bridges in Mathematics. And I cannot overstate how many times I would be prepping for a lesson and think, oh my gosh, I wish I would have learned it this way.
We began to look at math from the idea of a more conceptual approach. Previous programs did not attack math in the same way. There are a lot of, here's an algorithm. This is the way you solve for this. You always solved it this way versus truly understanding the concept.
In my Bridges classroom, I see students working together a lot, not being afraid to go out on a limb and solve problems and to try to figure their way through things. Even when they're working in their Bridges workbooks, it still gives them time where they're engaging with one another and checking each other's work.
By drawing pictures, by solving things, by arrays. They're using cubes and ten frames, and they're using their number racks, and they're getting on the floor and solving a problem with their friend and talking about it.
Bridges just creates that environment where they're not afraid to be wrong. They're not afraid to help a friend if they are wrong because they know if I am wrong, that someone's gonna help me and tell me why, and I'm gonna learn more from that.
They have the opportunity to raise their hand and tell, you know, oh, well, I thought this. And then their friend says, well, no, I thought this.
They don't have the least bit of problem explaining their answer or picking the best answer. They want to know why.
I can work with my students on a personal level. When they're able to go to their tables or in their workplaces or using their workbooks, I can go around and specifically pinpoint the students who need more support.
One of the things that happens with math is people give you one way to do it. So if you run into those barriers and all you ever taught a child is an algorithm, then the child struggles and the child cannot proceed because they don't know it. When you teach it from a conceptual level.
It's amazing the things that they can figure out. If you give them the tools and the resources they need, they can really just blow your mind.
It's not just about learning rote facts, but it's about the communication skills, the critical thinking skills, all of these that we previously called 21st century skills. But these skills that these students are gonna need to thrive in the world that they're gonna be a part of, I think that Bridges really fosters that.
They're no longer being told how to do something. They're discovering how to do something. And that's incredibly empowering to them.
The changes that I see for all of our students is the amount of risk-taking, recognizing that there's more than one answer to a problem. There's more than one strategy, and they can celebrate each other's mathematical thinking.
And to give kids multiple ways of solving problems, to promote that critical thinking, deepen that conceptual understanding using visual models as opposed to jumping right to the algorithm.
The growth that I've seen in the students is this ability to think. It's really noticeable that these students are able to think conceptually. They're able to think abstractly. With you presenting a question, there's not just one way.
When it comes to solving in more than one way, that's, that's a life skill.
The way Number Corner plays a role in my classroom is I feel it's a really big vocabulary builder.
With the ten frame, I love how students are able to count more efficiently.
Playing the workplace games or comes on the floor so we can do a problem string. I like the conversations that occur between the kids, between the students.
There's a true visual aspect to Bridges.
When we introduced the workplace, students are really excited because they know that they're gonna get to play this game.
We're preparing kids to apply these bits of information to new situations instead of asking them to memorize the dictionary of math. And that really allows them to be creative with their math and apply it to situations we can't even think of yet. It's so cool.
So it was really cool to hear from other teachers, but we also wanted to include a little bit of feedback from our teachers here in Lock Meadow. And also some of the student feedback. Some compelling. Um, I think one of, one of the most important kind of little vignettes that happened. First grade teacher stopped me and she was like, day three, there's a lot of work, but it's worth it. Not just on day three. She said, there's a lot of things that are a lot of work in our line of business and not all of them have the outcome, as, as she was feeling even on day three. But it is still something to keep in mind that it is a lot of work, especially as a new program and especially because we weren't able to support piloting teachers as much. We would like to make sure that we can do that with our implementation. So we've had lots of conversations with our administrative team, looking forward that if we are able to adopt the Bridges program, we really wanna make sure we take a look at our schedule and make sure that there's enough time to fit in that fifteen to twenty minutes of Number Corner because it was so powerful. And that's we need to make sure that it's prioritized that that time is there. And making sure that the other sixty minutes of math instruction is also protected as well. We want, wanna make sure that there's an embedded PD structure that's providing consistent support and unpacking the materials and understanding the units. We've heard from a lot of people who are using the program that looking at the next unit every month or looking at the Number Corner for the month pre, before you jump into it, was the most impactful use of their time. And we really want to have some time before the next school year starts to start getting our hands on some more materials if we can, get some observations into classrooms, either within the district or without, because we've made some friends outside of our walls. And get some training in as well. We wanna make sure that we do this right because it is, it's big. But we know that the outcome and the experience that we could provide our students is worth it. This is just a look at the Bridges suggested learning pathway. And so what they would want to set us up with right away is the Getting Started section, where we organize the materials, we think about layout of the classroom and really kind of understand it from a bigger level. And then we jump into kind of digging deeper with the onset of the school year. Yeah.
Chelsea, Nancy, thank you both. Again, I, I think it's clear that the process was thorough and thoughtful and collaborative and, and your passion for this, both of your passions comes through. I had an opportunity to come, as superintendents often do, they swoop in when all the hard work is done. I, I stopped in at a meeting where they were just with great thought and care to everybody's opinion, trying to arrive at consensus because these are really important decisions to teachers. And Chelsea and Nancy did a masterful job of guiding a room full of passionate educators towards a, a great conclusion. So we're excited to bring this recommendation to you tonight. Sue, do you want anything you need to add?
Yeah, I wanna talk finances, Mr. Maz's favorite topic. But I think in your packet, you had just a one pager, maybe a two pager about the cost of the Bridges program. Total cost for all classrooms, all student materials. We can use a lot of the materials that we currently have. We didn't have to buy a lot of that. Comes to the first quote of about a hundred and three thousand, four hundred and fifty-five dollars. That includes all of the materials that we got from the company to pilot not too long ago. Textbook companies were thrilled to send us all kinds of free stuff. And now they charge you for the use of their materials while piloting. And then they, you know, I thought maybe we'd get a discount for those, but no, we're paying full price for those as well. So this includes all, everything that a classroom teacher would need to start. It also, if you have a special needs teacher in your classroom and you're co-teaching, they also have access to all of this stuff. It might be after the fact that we need to order a couple more kits for some self-contained classrooms or self-contained math classrooms. But right now, this is the, our best estimate, or what we would order. Nothing is easy though, or, and it might be good news and it might not. But the Department of Ed, I heard a rumor that the Department of Ed was going to be supporting with some funding the Bridges program. So they've supported some other programs and they have not supported Bridges, which is ludicrous. I mean, it ranks so high in reports and things like that. But the Department of Ed has their own system for evaluating curriculum and materials. And I've been watching that Bridges has been in the process of that review and it's almost coming to an end. So I did ask the Department of Ed if they were considering funding Bridges or at least offering a grant for funding. And the answer is yes, they are. And soon is the when. So we've poked at them a lot and the Department of Ed doesn't seem to care what I say. So they will let us know as soon as possible whether or not that grant funding will be available and we'll definitely apply for it. So I'm, you know, we're asking you to approve the, the fiscal amount of a hundred and three thousand dollars in hopes that we will get partially, you know, reimbursed for this if the grant does become available. On a side note, I was able to get some funding from Desi for our grant to form, to, to fund the math portion of iReady. So that's a big chunk. It's probably close to fifty thousand dollars for the iReady math and the lessons and the screener and, and professional development. So that's helpful. So if you're so inclined, you can peruse the materials list at your leisure, but.
Want to make sure, was there a hard copy?
That's our initial.
It's in the electronic one, but it's.
Yeah.
It looks like there wasn't a hard copy in the, in the.
Oh.
But it is in the electronic file.
It definitely is. Yep.
The associated.
We found it today in there. Right, yes. Yeah.
Yeah.
And then there's an annual cost of about eleven thousand dollars. I think we need to run it through once to see if, you know, teachers wanna use the Number Corner books or are they okay with the online component to it. And so the first year, all of the student materials are half off. So that's a good buy. And we'll have a better handle on, you know, what grade levels want which materials by the end of this next school year. So that's it.
So once again, doesn't, it can't require committee action tonight, but we wanted to use this as an opportunity to present the recommendation, answer any questions that you might have. Chelsea and Nancy were kind enough to bring some materials with them. So there are materials here in the conference room. If anyone wants to stop by and take a peek and community members, questions are welcome as well. So, thank you.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Community members, comments, questions? Suzy?
Yes, thank you. This was very in-depth and I appreciate all of the background and understanding of the process that you went through, understanding that this was also an additional chore on the part of all of the teachers who did it. I, I will say, I just have to be completely upfront and disclose that I'm a big fan of Bridges. We implemented it in the district that I worked in across K through five. And I've, having visited so many classrooms that were implementing it, the Number Corner in particular, getting kids talking about numbers and the conversations that came from that. And then just the overall enthusiasm and engagement that then led them to the next, you know, activity and the application of the concepts was, was absolutely just a joy to, to see. And the coaches were excellent that worked with the educators. And it's still, you know, going strong down in the, in the district where, where I, I worked, not that far from here. If you need to go, let me know. But I just, I, I can't say enough about it. And I was also fortunate, my daughter got to be one of the pilot, be in one of the pilot classrooms. And I remember one day her coming home and just being like so jazzed about the number line. I mean, I can't tell you how excited she was about learning about the number line and like what she could do with that. And that's just, that's what you want, right? Like that's what you want to be able to see and, and, and hear from learners. So I just have to express that I'm already biased to the Bridges program because I've seen it in action and it really, it really is truly amazing. I think the other piece that's really so helpful from it are the assessments. Because the assessments are then, once, once you've taken an assessment, it's personalized to the needs of the child. So they actually spend time, especially at the upper levels, fourth and fifth grade, they actually spend time like developing their own plan for how they're going to work towards meeting the, the areas where they still were, were struggling just a bit. And so it's, it's definitely very student-driven, which I think speaks to the vision of the graduate, as you mentioned.
From the math specialist level, I did fall in love with how organized the assessments were. And I think there's also an assessment book over there. But Nancy and I have spent countless hours aligning assessments to standards so that they're able to be reported on and to see those cover sheets that come home. And so to have something that shows you like where the assessment is for that specific standard, but also where the chances are for reassessment, multiple points over the course of the year is actually huge for our standards-based assessment and learning. We didn't talk about that at all. But it's been definitely a challenge for teachers to see that, okay, my student struggled here. They didn't meet the, meet the, the standard here, but where am I actually gonna get the chance to really reassess them without just pulling them out or, you know, and it's built in naturally into this program. So I'm really excited about that as well.
It's music to our ears to hear about the number line and how excited your toddler was or your toddler was because.
I think just the conversations, right? Like that they can have. So yeah, it's a well-designed program for sure. So thank you for all the time and energy you put into it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Excellent. Mary, go ahead.
I have a few comments too. I just really wanna compliment your cohesive vision, incorporating the district goals, thinking about math practices, obviously, but also the vision of the graduate. I think for us who have, we've spent a lot of time talking about the vision of the graduate. So to hear that that was a big component of your decision and the decision-making process and one of the priorities for your committee is really wonderful to hear. Another one of your priorities, and you did talk about this, but the idea of building positive math identities is a great shift from when I was in school. And I think, you know, we do have students who are returning to school after some disruptive learning, as you know, and, and some are struggling in math, I think in particular. And, you know, I think building those positive math identities will be really powerful for them. And this program seems fun. I think that, you know, talking about the number line, talking about being excited about the calendar, talking, you know, will cause a shift for some kids who might not feel so great about math abilities at the current time. I have one who lives in my house. And so I'm speaking very personally about that. I'm excited for her about that. The other thing, I, I am actually undergoing this curriculum renewal process in ELA, in the district where I work. And so I just wanna also compliment your consideration of best practices because this is constantly evolving. Desi has put out lots of guidance on this that is constantly every year changing and being updated. And you spoke a little bit more in-depth, Chelsea, about your consensus protocols and the idea that a pilot is now more of almost like dipping your toe in the water and, and checking out the resources, but not fully adopting a program for a year only to discover that you don't like it. Like I just really think that the way that you've spoken about the process and then really transparent about the challenges too, that any pilot is going to face, is just refreshing and exciting. And then, so Marty, you know, when you hit the X and.
I just, I was like excited for that part because the first time I heard this in the curriculum sub, when, when I say literally, I was literally on the edge of my seat right now. Which one did they pick? Because you talked a little bit more about illustrative math. And so, so it's okay that we didn't have that experience, but I just, I don't usually go home and like talk more after these four-hour meetings. But I went home to my husband and said, oh my God, this math program. And I called the math supervisor in my district and asked her if she knew about it. And then I talked to my fourth grader about it. I just, your enthusiasm for this program just really. about it. I just, um, your enthusiasm for this program just really, um, is exciting and it's exciting to hear. Um, and I do want to say one more thing. I'm excited that you have requested support for, um, protected time and looking at scheduling. Um, Amy, I saw you nodding about that too.
A big nod.
Yes. That's really important for this to be effective for our students. Um, embedded PD comes with a lot of challenges, especially during times of sub shortages. And so, um, any thinking that, you know, the district can do about how to support the teachers in, um, best receiving the PD that they can have to make this successful, I think is really important. And then the other thing is summer is always this really great time, but I think that we have really tired educators who may not be, um, may not have the capacity to, um, to attend summer PD. And so some thinking about how we can accommodate, um, educators who may not be able to attend PD in the summer is also important. So thank you. That was awesome. Again, the second time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sue, go ahead.
Speak a little bit to PD. If we, um, get to adopt this great program, um, our hope, I think, is to get some PD under our belts before the end of the school year. So the teachers don't have that worry about, oh my gosh, I'm starting a new program at, in the end of August and I haven't opened it, I haven't cracked a book and I'm tired. And so, um, we're hoping for that. The, um, company will give us a couple, a couple of days of PD for all of our educators. And we are beefing up our substitute pool. We're interviewing every month and getting a few more on board. So, um, we're looking to be creative in any way, shape or form as far as that is concerned. So, um, and then continuing that next year, it's a, it's a big lift for all of our educators, but especially for our math specialists who are really truly there to meet the needs of struggling learners and, and not be coaches for our classroom teachers. So you'll probably heads up, hear me coming back and asking, you know, if we have any funding available for next year to consider putting that towards some math courses at elementary so that we can continue to support teachers as they, you know, put this program in place.
I want to piggyback on that, if that's okay, too. Um, thinking, I totally forgot to think about as next steps for educators and students, but we also want to make sure that we can, um, bring in the community, um, and help introduce them to this program with family nights. And that would be really helpful to have some extra hands on deck for that as well.
No volunteers?
No, be, be the time and the personnel to like.
Yeah.
Good stuff.
Volunteers too was one, but yeah.
So just a quick timeout. Anybody have a charging cable for Marty? Otherwise.
Otherwise.
You're going to lose.
I don't, I think that's a different charger.
I think it's a different one.
Did Tom hide all the power?
I got it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a different one. Thank you. We got, we got a few percentage points left. So we're going to be, we're going to be okay.
Other, other comments or questions? While we can still see Jamie and Bronwyn. Sue's saving the day.
Thank you.
Gianna, go ahead.
Everybody's going to be mad at me.
Is that the right one? So I can ask all my questions?
Yes.
You've got thirty seconds.
We're good.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
All right. Thanks, Tony. Um, so thank you. I mean, obviously, everybody on the committee is current or former educator in some sense. So, you know, you all are the experts and we got experts saying that, you know, it's an amazing program. I know the research that it took and all the efforts. Um, I've only been a school counselor, elementary school counselor for fifteen years, but I've been at the same, um, in the same district, at the same building. Um, and I've seen, like, it seems like almost every year, it's like, okay, there's a, you know, here's the new program, here's the new math. And I, you know, I work so closely with the teachers and I, I, I hear and I sense the stress and, um, like now we have to learn this and now we have to, you know, like, and that's not just for math, but the, you know, the reading and the, you know, social emotional and all the other things that come along with, with a, with a, with a school, especially in elementary, because that's where I am. But, um, so probably not a question you can answer, but like, is there a way that you can explain like, that you think this one's gonna, this one's gonna last?
This one's the one.
Yeah. Well, you kind of did, but I just, I, I just, I wouldn't feel right if I wasn't asking like because I've heard it so much from our teachers.
Um, I can speak as, and think, looking back, I think at our past experience too. Um, when we were here before, we kind of ended up picking a program that we felt pushed us forward a little bit, but was kind of safer. Um, it didn't require as much PD as one of the other options we were looking at. It didn't, it also didn't potentially push our students as much as the other program might have, but it felt like an easier lift. I think that we've really prioritized the student experience and student accessibility. And we've prioritized students and we do need to prioritize the needs of those who are teaching. Um, but I think we can handle that as well. Um, but by putting the students first in this decision, I think that we're making the right one. We've chosen the right recommendation. And I do know that this has been around for so many years. It's based off of all that research. It's based off of so many, all the best practices and it goes with our vision that we've decided as a community, um, so well. I, we definitely would not flip-flop anytime soon. This is definitely a commitment to, um, learning and growing as a staff, um, with our students as well.
Yeah. Right. It's right time, kind of a thing.
Yeah.
Right time.
I think we've grown, we've also grown so much as a staff since the last time we've done that. We do, right now, prioritize, um, the students more than our actual program that we're using would call for. We do bring in and try to listen and elicit their thoughts more than the program actually calls for. But now it's time for us to have a program that helps us grow even further. We've outgrown it.
And thank you for a lot. And can I just do a follow-up given?
Yeah. Go ahead.
So again, and, 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 you know, yes, just thank you because I know how much time and energy and effort. Um, with the student-centered, because one of the other things, social emotional counselor, is you were talking about the gameplay and the positive identity. Like, like so many times I've been in a classroom, I've been called to a classroom, like, you know, so-and-so got frustrated because they got X, Y, and Z wrong, or they couldn't even figure out how to get on the computer. And then they got frustrated and then they throw the computer, you know, like, so, um, and right now our lessons, my, all my lessons are centered on like, if you get tagged in a game and you're out, you know, like how do you deal with it? So like, you know, so is this, in this pilot, did you find, is that what you were talking about with the gameplay and the challenges? Or?
That was a huge challenge with both, um, programs that we were piloting because they both had a lot of talking and communicating and gameplay. Um, this one more so with the games and the centers. But yeah, we did find that that was a challenge, but it's a challenge that needs to be prioritized, right? And I'm, I'm connecting with so much with what you're saying because I think in our intervention groups, we're constantly working through anxious moments and yeah, the positive self-identities. And we have so many students that we see throughout the years, off and on, or for a while. And so much of that is really the core is them and, and letting them know that they have something to bring to the table and that they have room to grow and they will grow. And yeah, so I can imagine that you'd, to be able to bring together a positive community of learners where everybody feels valued could eliminate so many negative mindsets and.
Yeah. So, so you guys, so that, so it's a priority and you'll kind of be working towards that and, and, you know, and maybe working with the counselors as well because it, it, at this point it has to, you know, I, I just can't, I can't, I was telling superintendent earlier, like, some of my kids can't even play tag, you know, like, so we have to, we have to use all of those skills and especially in learning a new program. Um, and, and that was my last, um, question, like, like the continuity of, of learning or building on, and forgive me because I'm not, I'm not a teacher, but like, I'm just wondering, the stuff that they've already learned. So let's say like a, a second grader, for example, who's only learned, you know, who's only been learning for, you know, three years, like bringing in this new, is it like all new concepts and new learning? Or is it like, like the way kids, when you had that, the thirty-seven plus fourteen or whatever, I'm like, I, I know how I do, but that was, you know, forty years ago. Like, are they going to be able to?
In your way, it might've been up on the board too.
It was.
So is that what this means? Like there's, there's different ways, you know, I guess I'm just trying to figure out how hard it's going to be for kids to build on what they've already gained? Or is it just going to be like all new stuff? Can I connect that?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I think too, I'm not on that agenda. I'm just here to gloat over our teachers. But teachers have been bringing in on their own best practices and, and what is that, you know, good pedagogical math. And, and so bringing, they've been spending a lot of time bringing that in to our existing program. Now it's all kind of embedded for them. In addition to the standards for mathematical thinking, you know, that's all stuff that we have been pulling, math specialists and, you know, folks have been pulling in to, to create those conversations, to arm kids with, um, you know, wrestling with, with that math. Um, now it's going to be just part of the, the discourse from start to finish within the math lesson. So all those things, Amy, that teachers have been, so that'll be a part of the Bridges program? It's just in a nice package? Yeah. It goes back to what Mary was talking about, about the cohesion. Like it just all, it, it fits together. Okay. Really, really beautifully.
Yeah. And so that's really important. Our teachers, of course, have been providing our students with great math experiences, but those math experiences, because they're pulling on so many different things, have been varied by classroom or grade level and, and school. And so to have a program that brings in everything we want to bring in, but it's, it's organized so that it's horizontally and vertically aligned. Um, there's our education buzzwords. And, um, that's going to create such a better experience for our students moving from grade level to grade level. Um, because it will, yeah, it'll be cohesive. And we're, there's going to potentially be a little bit of a learning curve for our older kids jumping in to the Bridges program. And that might be kind of what you're thinking of too. Um, but so much of what the program is, is about bring, where are you at right now and where can we bring you? And where you're at, Nancy's strategy and my strategy are going to be different and we're going to come up with it on our own. And then we're going to share it out. And then you might help us see a different strategy that might be more efficient.
And especially, I mean, these past couple of years, we know, there's been a lot of interrupted learning.
True.
And, um, so kids are at different places and that's part of what you're talking about as well in terms of their social emotional stuff. Like they don't exactly remember how to, you know, get along and talk with other people. And, you know, so we're trying to meet them where they're at. It's not all going to be brand new. There's some new, you know, ways to look at things. Like the number line has not been a part of our curriculum, um, that we've been using. Uh, some people have pulled it in here and there, but it's like a really great tool that we love. Um, but it doesn't mean you can't understand it because you haven't been, you didn't do it last year, you know? So you should, you know, people are going to be at different spots, but they should still be able to, you know, come on board. Perfect. Thank, thank you both. And, and like Mary said, I was definitely thinking, I better call my math specialist when I meet here. So thank you for everything.
Suzy, go.
Yeah. Just a, a quick thing. I think, um, what I recall when we, um, implemented in the K through five was the coaches really helped us do, uh, an alignment, like where, where, you know, what skills and standards we had targeted in previous curriculum and then understood like, okay, where do we start off? So I think there's some level of that that will probably happen, um, because it will be different. Um, and so I think that, that's what I recall happening. Um, I recall going into a classroom and they're like, well, we're on like unit four because we had already really done that in, so we're actually going, advancing a little further, or we're starting a little, like, we're starting back at the beginning because like we, we weren't there yet. Or we're doing a fourth grade unit in third grade, or a third grade unit in fourth grade, depending on the alignment. I just recall that happening. I don't know if that'll.
It happened a little bit with the pilot. I think, uh, fourth and fifth grade especially, you know, working towards proficiency models and then here comes this different thing. I think the kids were, um, fine with it. And I think it challenged the teachers a little more at that grade level. And so.
But I think that's a, that's just a, you know, sort of a initiating phase, right?
Yeah.
Where.
And they'll eventually come off.
Once you get all those kind of kinks out of the way.
Yeah. And even some, we had some grade levels that, um, implemented one unit from each, um, program and some who did two units from each program. And, and those people, I think, could speak to things differently as well. Because, you know, some might say the first unit, I was kind of like, well, how does this organize? Like you're kind of, you know, get, but the second unit, they're like, oh, I, I get how it goes. And, you know, and that's part of the process.
I just want to say thank you again to, um, I know I also, like Mary heard, kind of the, the longer version a few weeks ago and loved it and, and was also equally very entranced by it this time around as well, getting to hear all the information again and getting excited about it again. And I think the thing that I liked, um, most about it, that maybe speaks a little bit to what, um, you were talking about, is that strong connection that you guys have in what you were looking for in a curriculum to the VOG and also the connections that you made for us to really see how it supports those vision of the graduate. And that really speaks well to that idea of sort of that vertical alignment as kids are moving through those grades. They're going to be more, um, ready to tackle whatever's coming next. And I know we have some curriculum review things coming up at upper levels as well, um, which is great because this gives us the opportunity to really see this as a, as a foundational basis that can be used to build on for those upper grades as well. And, and even now, knowing that as those reviews are happening, the math competencies and the identity and the skills that kids are getting from using this program, I think will really help with that transition as they keep moving through that. So I think that's one of the things I was most excited about by it, is really seeing the different ways that it approaches math, the different, um, ideas, games, activities, conversations really bring math to life in a way that's going to be nothing but helpful for kids as they continue to progress through their, through their math careers here at LHS. So thank you. It's a huge undertaking and we really appreciate you guys doing it and telling us about it.
Thank you.
So one question for you. I, I'm curious to hear what the, the middle school folks think about this, the transition from fifth to sixth grade. Um, have, how has that discussion gone?
Uh, well, we have been able to touch base, um, with our middle school math coordinator. And, um, I think she's really excited for us too. Um, I'm not sure that, and I might be speaking out of turn also because I'm not sure I've heard it say exactly, but the feeling I get is that we're not too worried about, um, transitioning from one program to the other because we're really banking on the fact that our students are about to come in with a lot more fluency and a lot more critical thinking skills developed. Um, and that is going to help them with whatever their next steps are. But I do think that on the radar of the middle school is thinking about what kind of experience they also want to provide. And so potentially there could be some more conversation in that.
We, she, our middle school math coordinator came to the meeting where you got consensus from the group and she was really excited about the process as well. And, um, they planned, actually they started a couple of years ago with the pandemic to start to look around and think about, uh, curriculum review and started some of the process. And they are on board for that next year. Um, but feeling like it only is going to give students more strength when they're coming into the sixth grade for problem-solving and those kinds of things. So not to worry about it. And Bridges stops at grade five, I'm pretty sure. So we'd have to make a different choice at the middle school.
Yeah. And it does seem like middle school curriculums and high school curriculums are moving towards very problem-based.
Yeah.
Work as well. And so that would only support that move even further.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? All right. Thank you so much. Um, this was wonderful. Um, great conversation. Thank you for all of your work and all of the teachers' work. Really appreciate it.
Thanks for having us.
Good job.
Thank you. And I guess the, the final thing, I would say, just if, uh, community members want to weigh in on this, feel free to send us an email, um, and come to visitor comments next meeting. Because I, I think if I understand the process correctly, Marty, we would vote on this at our next meeting. Um, so now was the time for the community members to send us your feedback. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Administrator reports. Marty, you're up.
All right. Uh, thank you. I'll, I'll try to be brief. We have a few other items, uh, on your agenda. Uh, some, I know springtime calendars fill up quickly. And so a couple of dates, if, uh, and I know you all have busy personal and professional schedules, but, uh, Dagan might've mentioned it earlier. Long but a high graduation is on Thursday, June ninth at 5:00 PM. And I'm certain that you'll be invited to sit on stage if it is of interest and if it fits your schedule. Recognize that it's a busy time of year. So that's Thursday, June ninth, LHS graduation. We have, uh, Arbor Day tree planting ceremonies coming up, uh, at Center School in Blueberry. I know Center School is on Thursday, the twenty-eighth at eleven. Blueberry, I'm not sure if that's been pinned down yet. We'll, we'll get you that date. Um, so much happening. It's great to see the vibrancy. LHS, uh, Major Works Concert is Thursday, May nineteenth. Um, that's a, that's a great concert.
Be there.
What's that?
Be there.
Be there. We will be there. And. And, uh, um, on Friday, I have the opportunity to attend, uh, a meeting of the District Attorney's Youth Advisory Board. We have some students that are represented on that DA's Youth Advisory Board. So it's, there's an event down at the Hall of Fame. It's a great celebration of kids actively, uh, pursuing, um, projects coordinated by the DA's office on, on things that are of interest to them. Internet safety, distracted driving, teen mental health are just some of the topics that, that that advisory board, uh, addresses. I want to put a plug out to anyone that is listening and our principals are doing the same in their communication over the next week or two, is to, uh, ask folks to be mindful of student pedestrians, student, um, bicyclists. And it's springtime, more kids walking, more kids on bikes. At a productive meeting of the Traffic Safety Committee, uh, last week with, uh, DPW was represented, uh, Long Meadow Police was represented, uh, the town manager's office, I, we had the opportunity to attend. We talked specifically about, um, some traffic calming measures coming out of the driveway, uh, at, uh, at the store's library, uh, where there's a long driveway leading towards a sidewalk. And so I'm appreciative that they were, uh, willing to, uh, consider some traffic calming measures there. But again, uh, drive safely everybody and look out for student bikers and student walkers. The admin retreat, I want to thank, uh, everyone who's ever attended the administrative retreat. It was Tuesday, April 9th, really, uh, productive, engaging discussion, um, with our administrative team and the school committee. A good opportunity to talk, to celebrate a lot of the amazing things that are happening, but also, uh, you know, sort of transparently talk about some of the, the challenges that, uh, our administrators are seeing, uh, in, in terms of, um, uh, some of the, frankly, inappropriate school behaviors that we're seeing an increase in and, and also the, um, mental health challenges that a lot of young people are experiencing as well. And so those are things that we, we want to, um, you know, really stay engaged with. Families on and confront head on. But, uh, that, that was a, a great conversation. Ron Jones event, we mentioned earlier, 75 or 80 people assembled in the high school auditorium to hear a conversation about really, I think the, the central message of Ron Jones was calling, calling folks into conversations rather than calling folks out of conversations. And, and I think it's a great way to approach some of the difficult conversations relating to discrimination and bias and prejudice and, and, uh, so it was, it was really, really interesting. And thanks for, thanks to Sue for working really, really closely with the Student Anti-Racism Committee to pull that together. On a related note, um, I had solicited interest from community members and from staff in terms of forming a DEI Advisory Council. Had a great, uh, response from, uh, staff and from parents to the point where Sue and I talked today about, um, thinking about how we can involve all the respondents because there's frankly more respondents than there was, um, sort of slots available on this DEI Advisory Council. So, uh, stay tuned for that and we'll be in touch with, um, we'll be in touch with families on, on that, the creation of that DEI Advisory Council. The town is, is, uh, pursuing a municipal vulnerability preparedness grant. It's an opportunity for the, uh, town to do some planning around, uh, climate change and build, uh, climate awareness. And there's an opportunity for our students to be engaged and supported by that grant through participation with the Audubon Society. And perhaps an opportunity to tie some of the civics action projects into the mentorship and guidance that they could get from as a result of this grant. So I'm excited about that. And, um, a couple of other things that are coming up later on in our agenda. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Marty. Comments or questions for Marty? Gianna.
Superintendent, thanks for your report. I, um, and I mentioned this to you on the phone and, but I never sent an email. If you are going to be looking for a committee member to be a part of the DEI, um, group, I'd love to put my name in for that.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for mentioning that. That should have been part of the, the ask tonight. We had, um, hopefully slotted a, um, a seat on that DI Advisory Council for the school committee. And so if you're willing and able, we also talked at an earlier meeting that if it didn't work out on a particular day for your schedule, that it, it wouldn't hurt to have it, the committee represented on a rotating basis if that still works for everybody. We'll, we'll let everyone know when those, um, meetings are coming up.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions for Marty? Yes, ma'am?
Just aside, um, I missed some of the dates that you said at the beginning and I'm just, you don't have to repeat them, but maybe if you wouldn't mind following up with any email?
Sure, yeah.
Okay, that'd be great, thank you.
Absolutely, yeah. And I expect you'll get a formal invite from the high school on the graduation for sure.
And is that back at Symphony Hall?
We're outside on the field.
Oh, we're outside?
Yeah, it requires so much advanced planning and booking with Symphony Hall.
It worked well last year.
It did, cross your fingers for good weather.
Yeah, cloudy.
Yeah, and it'll be, it won't even be as, as sort of socially, it, it won't need to be as socially distanced this year, so it'll be a more intimate affair and it, it worked out really well.
It, it was lovely last year. We can get the same weather. Uh, other comments or questions? All right, thank you, Marty. My report, just a, a couple of things. I, I do want to, to repeat a couple of things that, that Marty mentioned. Sue, thank you for all your work with the Ron Jones event and the, the Anti-Racism Committee. Again, we know that was led by the students and, and it's a wonderful thing that they took the lead on that and had a wonderful event. And, and the other thanks I want to give is a shout out to all the parents who were there. The conversation that, that Ron facilitated with the parents was a highlight for me. Just hearing community members talk to each other about difficult, uh, difficult topics in a very civil way and not always agreeing, um, but having a really wonderful community conversation. That doesn't happen very often and so I thank you to everybody who made it possible for us to have that. I think that was really wonderful. The admin retreat, that was a great event. It feels like a long time ago now, but, um, it really was a wonderful event and, and I want to thank all the administrators who were there. We don't get to talk to them frequently, right? We, we meet with them formally twice a year and, and it really is a, an important and special time for us and, and it helps reinforce how lucky we are to have such a great administrative team. So, um, I, I really enjoyed that. Thank you to you and your team for setting that up. I think that was a, a great event for us. The only other thing I have are, are a couple of dates. We already mentioned the town meeting is two weeks from today. Don't forget the town meeting is two weeks from today, 7 o'clock in the high school gym. And, you know, for no, no other reason, come to take advantage of the new electronic voting. It's going to be so exciting. So check that out. Also, don't forget the upcoming election is on June 14th. So hopefully folks have that on their calendar. Just a reminder, if you're not going to be around, request an absentee ballot. It's very easy. Uh, I know my kids have done that. College kids might not be around, um, anybody not around, request your absentee ballot. It's very easy. Thank you in advance for participating in the election. That's all that I have. Any questions? Dagan?
I do have some things for you. I always have something to say. The teachers love me. So the first thing I'd like to address was, um, Ron Jones. As a person who got to see him on the student's side for two, two sessions, I think it was very beneficial to the student body, um, listening with, an open mind was the biggest thing that I think a lot of people needed to look at. He really addressed it, for my age group and my, I see, see a lot in my generation, we're very involved with political discourse. And a lot of us have that and we see that a lot in our lives and we have a lot of political discourse with each other and that creates a lot of division. However, Ron Jones set the stage for a conversation that was open and okay. For instance, there was a, there were two students who had two different opposing views on whatever topic. Let's let BLM or whatever. He facilitated such conversation, created such an environment that usually those students would be cutthroat at each other and they were actually able to have a complete discussion. One of those students was banned. And then afterwards, I actually got to speak with Mr. Jones. I asked, pulled him aside and we had a great conversation about, you know, where our country is headed and what this political discourse is and how we can't just have these open discussions, how they create such division. And it was really, really informative and it was really great for me. So that's what I get out of it personally. And then, as a member of the music department, I have to let you guys all know what's coming up in the music department's schedule. So what has happened so far is everyone who has auditioned for Wind Ensemble, Concert Band and Lyrics, congratulations if you got in. I would, I finally have been, after the third attempt, have been allowed into Lyrics. I'm very, very happy. I get to wear a nice little cool robe now. And then they have a couple concerts coming up. I know the Major Works Concert, as Dr. O'Shea said, was on. I'm look, I'm literally looking at the, I can't, I can't find, I'm literally looking at the schedule right now. The Major Works Concert is...
Thursday, the 19th.
Thursday, the 19th and the Spring Concert is, can I find it before Dr. O'Shea does?
Well.
No, I cannot, it's fine. The Spring Concert is also coming up. I'm performing that. And then the Major Works Concert is going to be really, really cool. I know all the instrumental ensembles have been working very, very hard. Orchestra is doing Beethoven's Fifth. It's a very hard piece to, to know. Lyrics is going to be doing a conjunction piece with that, is 25 minutes long. If you're singing for 25 minutes long, I give you props. But yeah, they're working very, very hard for the Major Works Concert and please come out and support them. And also with the music department, back on the first to the third was the MICA Festival. MICA, MICA is, how do I put this? Do we all know what MICA is? Okay, good. So.
I didn't explain it for people who don't.
Okay, yeah. So MICA is just a place where ensembles can come from around Ma- Massachusetts to show off their skills in somewhat of an adjudicated performance. You can go in and you can receive critiques from esteemed judges and you can also compete for a Medal of Merit, gold, bronze and silver. Long Meadow Lyrics took gold, Wind Ensemble took silver and so did Orchestra. So congratulations to those groups. I know Ms. Warland would be very mad at me if I did not mention that, but congratulations to those who participated. And that is all I have to report.
Thank you, Dagan. All right. Other reports, LPVC, Mary?
Uh, yes, we had a meeting on April 13th and, um, it is an annual report out for every shop. And so we had, um, a representative from every shop give an update and highlight about what's been happening. It was great. Then, uh, we went on with our regular meeting, um, which, uh, just very quickly, we had a finance report, we approved a minor budget revision, um, we approved the meeting schedule for next year and, um, there was a motion to award a bid for the purchase or finance of 1871 passenger buses and five mini school buses and that passed. And that actually was a really compelling discussion about the cost of buses. And again, um, you know, just something I didn't really know a lot about and I learned a lot. So, um, it's interesting to sort of be part of a group that is making these decisions that are, um, kind of these operating decisions that, um, require a lot of thought and research and, um, it's been a good experience.
How many buses?
According to the motion, 18, I believe, yeah. It was 1871 passengers and then five.
I thought she said 1871. Yes, we're finally going to have some fives. Never mind.
No, that is not what I said, so. I was going to say, maybe I made a mistake. I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure that's right.
And, and we all appreciate you representing us there, Mary.
Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, any comments or questions on that? All right, excellent. Energy and sustainability, we meet on Thursday, so I'll have a report for you at our next meeting. Gianna, SEAL.
Thank you, Kevin. So SEAL, Special Education Alliance of Long Meadow, had a great meeting in April and thank you to Mr. Mazza. And Jean Fontaine was on here, but I think she might have jumped off, um, for all your information and your time and your care in joining that meeting. The information was very, very useful. I know the parents and guardians and myself, um, were, um, were glad to receive the updates and be able to ask questions, so thank you for that. The next meeting is Wednesday, May 11th, 7:00 PM. And as of now, I think it's still virtual, um, but check out sealma.org for more information. And please, um, again, the advocacy, the support, the community building is, um, just really, I'm grateful for that, for, for everybody that can, can be a part of it. But, um, I also just want to encourage people, you don't have to have a student with special education needs to want to see about diversity and inclusion, um, and just togetherness and supporting students. So, thank you.
Thank you, Gianna. Do we have any tax ceiling dates?
No report.
I feel like we should just remove that item. We haven't had a report in a long time. All right, the subcommittee reports, Finance Subcommittee. Tom, are you going to lead this one off?
Jamie, I don't know, do you want to say on the onset of the Finance Sub?
You can, why don't you go ahead and start it off?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Finance Subcommittee met earlier this evening, uh, so there are a couple of items in your packet and, um, a few for consideration tonight, um, also on the agenda. So there are two FY '22 budget reports that are both informational in nature in the packets. The first is a, a year-to-date budget report. Both of them are from about a month ago. I, I worked on those, uh, in March. So the year-to-date budget report will track expenditures through the date of the report, but also has some projections in the columns to the right that are highlighted. Again, my best guess as to where we anticipate expenditures to go from now until June 30th. We continue to track, um, some open positions which are contributing to, uh, an increase in that bottom line balance that we're projecting in that report. Again, I would say it's fluid, it's, it's my best guess, um, but subject to change. It's probably conservative in nature as I try to estimate on the higher side. So there are no surprises hopefully by the time June 30th rolls around. The second report would be a revolving account report, so these would, uh, this document would kind of reflect, again, uh, funds that see activity, um, throughout the course of the year. And again, capturing revenue that has been received to the date of the report. Expenditures also, uh, that have been recorded, projected encumbrances that were known at the time. And at least in the top portion of the account, I give you an estimate of, again, my best guess of where I anticipate the fund balance to end as of June 30th. While the bottom portion reflects some of our operational accounts, athletics and school lunch that, uh, change on a daily basis based on expenditures being incurred, additional revenue coming in, and the like. But I would say overall, between both financial reports, no surprises, no unexpected, um, activities or concerns at this time. But I'm happy to address any questions you might have either tonight or you see something that, uh, doesn't make sense or you just need some more information on, please don't hesitate to let me know. And we'll probably be, be bringing forward a, uh, an updated year-to-date budget report now that we're getting closer to the end of the year.
Thank you, Tom. Any comments or questions? Jamie, anything you want to add to that from Finance Sub?
Of course, I mean, thank you, Tom. We had a good meeting earlier on today and, um, I, I, you know, think Tom has everything in perfect order right now.
Thank you, Jamie, as, as Tom always does.
Thank you. Um, there is a, a budget transfer request. There are two listed on the agenda. We are going to table the general fund transfer, so there is only the request for consideration, um, of the special revenue and grants revision. This would be the fourth revision we've made this fiscal year. There are, uh, some slight increases that the district was awarded in a number of our, uh, title grants, so Title 2A and IBA. And I believe, uh, Metco all received, uh, a slight increase along with, um, our ARPA grants. The total amount of the increases is $16,810. There is also um, some shifting, some reappropriation of our drug-free community grant. No change in the total award, just some reallocation based on where we are tracking spending to actually occur within that grant. So that is uh, in your packet and was uh, recommended by Finance Sub tonight for approval.
All right, so just to make sure I understand, we had two recommended motions. We're gonna table the first one and Finance Sub would like us to consider the second one.
Correct.
Okay, so we have a recommended motion if anyone would like to move it.
I move on the recommendation of the Finance Subcommittee that the School Committee approved the budget revision request as outlined in the document titled FY twenty-two Grants and Special Revenue Revision Number Four, dated April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, we will move to a vote. Suzie?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And yes for me.
Kevin?
Yes.
Sorry. Do we need to mention that Nicole stepped out?
I, I'm sure that Diane, actually Diane might not see that. So Diane, yes, Nicole stepped out. Thank you for bringing that up. Because if Diane were in the room, she would know that. But the owl, who knows? Thank you for that, Gianna. Um, end of year purchase requests.
So the uh-
Hey, Tom?
Yes.
Yeah, I know, you, I, I can give kind of an overview on this, but I think I, the one thing I want to say is at least what's written in there. I think we want to uh, table, you know, anything, you know, as it relates to that, right, at this point in time, in my opinion. Um, but you can kind of give an overview. I, I think it's not something, you know, that the committee might be ready or have enough information yet to make a good decision. So.
Thanks.
But I want to give kind of an overview of what we talked about in, in the meeting. I think, I think we got it kind of tabled for, for tonight.
Okay. So uh, we presented to Finance Sub a, for consideration, a request to purchase one thousand uh, Chromebooks. So we, the district has approximately thirty-two hundred Chromebooks that are primarily for students, but there are some staff, paraprofessionals that are also issued those devices. Uh, about a third of them are, their expected useful life is coming to an end in June. Um, so we are in a position where we would need to replace those. The devices would continue to work, but they would no longer be receiving repu- uh, support from the manufacturer. They wouldn't be uh, receiving updates for software changes. So um, in line with our cycle of replacing Chromebooks on about an every five-year basis as they expire and approach the end of their useful life, this is the, uh, probably the largest investment we would have based on it being about a third of the devices that are used um, by students and some of the staff. So Finance Sub did uh, discuss it. Um, we did, we discussed funding options. Um, and we settled on using funds from our School Choice account, which does have a balance that would be able to support the cost, which would be about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, so I think, Jamie, what we talked about was maybe coming back at the next meeting for uh, consideration and approval on that.
Yeah, yeah, I think that, that would be good. And I think kind of that um, is obviously having that discussion with the, the discussion we just had as it relates to the math curriculum, um, is probably, probably appropriate. Um, you know, and, and kind of talking through that, uh, they're connected versus separate, uh, would be, would be my opinion. Um, I think, I think we should do that just to kind of make it, make a total discussion around, you know, the amount of money spending there.
So we did present also the potential adoption of the ma- elementary math curriculum and the commitment or request for that financial amount. Um, and so I think waiting on the adoption of that curriculum along with the potential purchase of the Chromebooks uh, to be done at the next meeting.
Okay.
All right. So we wanted to get it out there so you understood. It is a large request. Um, it probably will be the um, between the two adopt, the adoption of the elementary math curriculum and the Chromebooks would probably be the end-of-year purchase request we would have this year for you, the, the investments we'd be looking for.
Thank you, Tom. Any additional comments or questions? All right, so it sounds like more from Finance Sub at our next meeting?
Correct.
Excellent. All right, um, Policy Sub has no report. Um, Curriculum Sub?
I seem to be losing my voice, so I'm not gonna say too much. But um, we've met twice since the last time we were all together. Um, one of the times we heard from um, Ms. Barry and um, Sue about our um, look at the new curriculum, which was excellent. And you've all basically heard most of that, so we're good there. Um, and the other time we met was to um, discuss a little bit more about the um, planning for the task force and the outside company and to really work on focusing in those, um, or clarifying those focus questions that will help guide that task force. So got some good work done there, put together some um, prospective timelines. Um, and had some conversations relating to how that outside company is really gonna help inform the work that that task force is doing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments or questions for Nicole from the Subcommittee? All right, thank you. Evaluation Subcommittee?
Uh, hey, Kevin, I was wondering if we could um, review this after we discuss the possible new meeting dates.
It's fine with me.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, so push that back until we get to that one. So yeah, just remind me. So I don't breeze past it. All right, so then I think we're uh, on to ongoing business, which is the School Committee meeting dates. Um, so looking at the calendar, we needed to do some revisions to this. Um, so uh, May tenth, we cannot meet because that's the town meeting date. So the proposal is to move that to Thursday, May twelfth. Um, so let's take that one first. Any comments or questions on that one? Okay, it sounds like that one has been moved. Okay. All right, so then to June, the issue with June, June fourteenth is the election. Uh, again, we can't have a meeting the night of the election. So we're proposing to move that one to June seventh. Um, and then to keep our two-week schedule to move the twenty-eighth to the twenty-first. Um, so comments or questions on those proposals? And I'm hearing nothing. Okay, so I think we have our revised meeting schedule. Excellent. All right, and just, I think this is more for our information. We have a proposed meeting calendar for next school year. So for folks who are continuing on the committee, you have that. I don't think we need to discuss that.
Nope, I don't think so. I think, uh, thank you to Diane for putting that together in it. Um, you'll note that we tried to line up some meeting dates in May and June of next year that don't conflict with um, town meeting and elections. So. We wanted to do this again. We'll have to do this again, yes.
Thank you. Um, excellent. All right, so Bronwyn, do you want me to throw it back to you now?
Yes, thank you very much. Um, so Eval Subcommittee met prior to uh, this School Committee meeting. Um, Suzie's just gonna give us an overview of the end-of-year evaluation um, for Dr. O'Shea and how that process goes. And then I am gonna apply with some dates. And I will follow up um, in an email that kind of lists the dates and um, what will be happening on each of those dates. Okay, Suzie, go ahead.
Okay, um, I have all the dates outlined. Is it okay if I mention them as I, as I explain the process?
Okay.
Um, so, yes, so um, every year we um, evaluate as the School Committee, um, the superintendent's performance based on his goals that he set forth in um, basically as of last year at the end of the year, but then also um, kind of formatted to, to really start off the, the school year with. And um, what he will do as part of that process is actually develop a, a self-evaluation or a narrative report that identifies where, you know, he thinks he's, he's, you know, really improved in terms of, you know, performance relative to his goals for this year, where he's met those goals. It's all very much dictated by the um, state of Massachusetts um, regarding the evaluation of the superintendent um, in every district. And so um, what we uh, decided on was to really kind of um, accelerate the process this year. Um, so on Monday, uh, May ninth, um, Marty will get, uh, Dr. O'Shea will get his self-evaluation and reflection to the School Committee. So you will have that um, in your email. You will have it as a document and it might also be on the drive as well. But um, it, it will be something that you can start to review. Dr. O'Shea has in the past and I, and he has committed to this again, obviously, that if anyone would like to meet with him directly, individually, to talk with him about his self-reflection and about his goals document, that that is certainly available to anyone on the committee to do so. Um, Diane, who's hearing this for the first time, will be sending out the forms um, that we've, that she sent out to the past, um, to the School Committee members. There is a form that is a short form and that's the one we um, we would ask you to please use. Not the longer form where there's actually more information that you need to identify in scoring. Um, but you will be rating the superintendent in the four areas that um, that superintendents are assessed on. Um, and then uh, you will be providing um, just some comments about um, you know, his, his performance. And um, those can be in the form of recommendations or commendations. It could just be observations, however you choose to um, construct that. And on the, at the meeting on May twelfth, that was just uh, changed from the tenth, um, Marty will review at a high level his um, his narrative. And then the following week, um, May seventeenth is a really important date. We ask that your evals actually are submitted electronically to Diane, who will then upload them to the drive. So May seventeenth is the target for um, getting your uh, individual School Committee evaluation done with the ratings and the comments. And then on May nineteenth, the Subcommittee, the Evaluation Subcommittee will need to um, do what we call, to create what we call a synthesized evaluation. So in other words, we'll review each committee member's individual submissions and we will work to sort of gel that into a one single evaluation uh, document that will be uh, presented at the May twenty-fourth meeting for School Committee vote. Does that make sense? So um, it doesn't mean that your individual um, ratings will not be shared with the superintendent, but they, they will be a supplement to the, the fully, full of School Committee-approved evaluation.
I'd add, um, most of you have been through it. Uh, Mary, if you want to spend some time, I can explain the process. It's very similar to educator evaluation, that teacher evaluation. It's almost identical. So if you're familiar with that, then let's have the battle.
I, I have a lot of evaluations to write before this.
Yes. Yeah, and, and happy to meet uh, individually with School Committee members to go over um, either in advance of you developing your evaluations or subsequent to you developing your individual evaluations, whatever works for you.
And we did discuss at the uh, Subcommittee meeting that Diane can send out, send out those forms at any time, just so you have them and can leave you in ahead of time uh, before May ninth and certainly after as you prepare your evaluations.
And Suzie, just a reminder to folks, when, when we submit those individual evaluations, those are part of the public record once they're submitted, right? So if somebody asks to see our individual evaluation, they are able to see that, right? So I think it's important for everybody to remember it is a public document.
Right.
Even though we're not presenting our individual evaluations at an open meeting.
Right.
It is a public document.
It still is a public document. That is correct. But it's being used to generate the synthesized evaluation.
That will be presented-
That will be presented to, to the public, absolutely, at a public meeting.
Any other comments or questions? Yes, Gianna?
Diane, you, do you have a question? I just, I just wanted to say, it's not a public document until it's at a meeting. So it won't be a public document until the Evaluation Subcommittee meets. I just wanted to be clear on that.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Diane. Appreciate that clarification.
Yes, that's a good point. Just the process of submitting it doesn't mean that it's public because it's not operated on, right?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Gianna?
Uh, thanks for all that, Suzie and Bronwyn. Suzie, so I know you're saying we're gonna submit the short form. Is Diane gonna send us the long form as well?
Diane has sent both in the past. Diane, would you like, would you still want to do that?
Yeah, I can. I just, you don't need to submit the long form back.
Right, that is a good tool. The, right, the, the long form does have a lot of instructions and, and, you know, context, so it is, it is helpful. But um, from the standpoint of the Evaluation Subcommittee, it's most helpful to have the short form with your comments included.
Any other questions or comments? Excellent. Uh, Eval Subcommittee, thank you for all of your work. And we know you have upcoming work, so thank you in advance. All right, um, moving on to new business, uh, the Ad Hoc Subcommittee to establish a School Building Committee. This is very exciting new business. Marty, you wanna take this one?
Certainly. Um, to uh, potentially add to your already full plates, uh, we, Kevin and I had discussed the um, the process that we would use to establish a School Building Committee in response to uh, an MSBA requirement and in response to the invitation that we've received from the School Building Authority to address the needs of our two middle schools. So as part of that, we're required to establish a School Building Committee. In your packet, there's a uh, template that identifies the seven or eight positions that um, are sort of required to be on the School Building Committee roster. And then there's a few sort of at-large seats uh, that can be added to that School Building Committee as well. Uh, we, I think we want to be sure that we're being thorough and transparent uh, as we establish this very, very important committee. It's a, it's a lot of work. Um, uh, having been part of a School Building Committee in the past. So our thought is, uh, for the committee's consideration tonight, is to establish a short-term, temporary Subcommittee of the School Committee to establish a process to develop a roster for the School Building Committee. So in other words, the, the idea would be a Subcommittee, the School Committee comes together. They um, establish a way to solicit membership on that School Building Committee. They establish a way to make decisions about that School Building Committee. And then they bring forward a recommendation to the full committee for the establishment of that School Building Committee. So we're staying ahead of the MSBA deadline with this because technically we, we don't, we can't submit this until after August first. But uh, we want to take our time and do it right in terms of establishing a School Building Committee. So our eligibility period does not start until August one. That's where that, that's where that date comes from. But this will give us plenty of time to, to do it right, potentially. There may be other uh, ways to establish a School Building Committee. This isn't required, but we, we thought this would be the best way to do it publicly and, you know, in a way that is, is open and clear to the community. So for your consideration, I know you have a lot of Subcommittee's uh, that are busy already, but this is an important one and we want to get this, we want to establish this roster thoughtfully and properly. So for your consideration.
And just one quick follow-up to that, which is, we could do this without a Subcommittee and then we'd have to do it as part of our- and then we'd have to do it as part of our regular meetings, which that did not seem to us like the most efficient way to spend the meaningful times. It seemed better to have a Subcommittee and then bring a recommendation to the full committee. So, yeah, just wanted to throw that out. So comments or questions about the proposal to establish a Subcommittee that would then recommend the membership on the actual committee?
Kevin, can I ask a question about the list first before?
Absolutely, yeah, sure.
Superintendent, thanks for this. So who, the, the list, I know this is just kind of like a, a, where did these roles come from?
This comes from the MSBA. It's rooted in statute and regulation, the positions that have to be on a School Building Committee.
All right, so would you or would us or somebody be able to say like, like, so I'm looking at Member Knowledgeable and Educational Mission and Functional Facility, because I'm thinking like, when we had our, when we had, when we had Vertables built and when we had our new school built, like Custodians, they were never invited to, you know, like, so like, are we allowed to add, you know, and it says other, please, like, there's no students, you know, like...
This, this can be as large as you want it to be. I think what I've seen is that maybe a 10 to 15-member committee is most effective. I think when you get larger than that, it, it starts to get bogged down.
Yeah.
There are, on this template, there are, I believe, 12 slots, but you could add to that with the sort of at-large positions for sure, if you wanted to. This is, it would only be one of the ways that there would be public input and public involvement. All along the way, there would be stakeholder groups that would come together to advise us on a feasibility study and design process and the, and the educational program that you want. So there'll be many, many, many opportunities for community members to be involved that go way beyond this. School Building Committees are, are public bodies. They work similar to a School Committee posted public meetings with, subject to the open meeting law.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right, so I'm guessing that silence is, we're good with this idea. Okay, excellent. And then Marty, is the most efficient way maybe to, to ask members to think on this and if they're interested in the Subcommittee to send you an email?
Yeah, and I include you as well, yes, the two of us.
Okay, the two of us.
Yeah.
And I think our goal would be to have a three-member Subcommittee?
Three-member, yeah.
Okay, all right, so the invitation is there. If people are interested, let Marty and me know. All right.
Perfect.
Thanks, Marty.
Thank you.
All right, it looks to me like we are to a possible motion for an executive session.
I move that the School Committee meet in executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Purpose Two, to conduct a strategy session in preparation with collective bargaining with units A, B, C, D, E, F, H and with non-collective bargaining personnel. And Purpose Seven, consideration of release of executive session minutes of previous meetings to not reconvene into open session.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? We will move to a vote. Suzie?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And yes for me. Thank you, everyone. We are, the, the regular part of the meeting is closed. We are going to executive session. Hope to see everybody in two weeks at the town meeting. Have a great night.
Good night.
Good night.
Good job, Diane.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you. Everyone get up and stretch.
Yeah.